Can I call the meeting to order, Jared? Everybody's on? Okay. Like to call to order the common council meeting, the City of Algoma on Monday, November 2nd, 2020. I would like the clerk take the role for the last time.
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Gore.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Wees.
Here.
Leverden.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval of or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Anybody have any questions about the agenda? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve. Moved by Mitch. Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes from October 5th and October 20th. Did you all have a chance to review them? Does anybody have any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve both October 5th and October 20th. By Lee.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Public hearing. At this time, we'll have the public hearing on the 2021 City of Algoma Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. I'll turn it over to our treasurer, Amber Shallow.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna share a few slides here. Are they on your desktop?
Yeah, they're on the desktop.
Okay. Full screen, we don't do it. I, yeah. Now it's here. Okay. So we're gonna just do a really quick, brief overview because everybody's already seen the details. This is our budget for '21. We published the notice in the paper on November 2nd, or, sorry, on October 14th for tonight's November 2nd council meeting. We have a proposed preliminary budget for the general fund of $4,102,779.36, which is roughly a 0.89% increase over the 2020 budget. These are the amounts per fund. So, 4.1 million for general fund. The library fund is 323,000. Marina's 255, Rescue's 266. The Marina, or, I'm sorry, the wastewater treatment facility fund or sewer fund is a little over $2 million, but that does include capital. Then there's the wastewater treatment facility reserves. That is a requirement of our USDA debt payments we have to put on the side. It also is equipment reserve requirements as part of our clean water fund loans. Equipment reserve fund, that is the amount we will be putting into the fund balance, 50, just shy of 59,000. And then TID, the TID districts 1, 2, and 3. And then our capital projects for the general fund. So your streets and dock replacements, things like that, are just shy of 2.8 million. Some of that is grant money. Some of it is the loan money, some of it's transfers from general fund. So, the general fund revenues, where do they come from? These are all the different sources. The vast majority of our money comes from taxes, property taxes, accommodations taxes. And then intergovernmental revenues, which is the state shared revenues and township contracts. Those are your two primary sources of revenue. For our expenditures, this was changed slightly after the budget workshop. I was asked to split out the fire protection fees or the hydrant rental. It's called both. That amounts to about 10% of the general fund budget, just that one payment. So, of the fire department's $582,000 budget, 180,000 is for their operations. 402 gets paid to the utilities for the hydrant rental. One thing we talked about at the budget workshop was putting in the tax levy at the full amount. We do not have all of the jurisdictions' tax levies in yet. But as of today, we have received the school districts and NWTCs. Both the school district and NWTC had a little over a 4% increase to their tax levies for our residents.
Amber, repeat that, 4%? Is it F-O-U-R?
Yes. So the school district was 4.5%. The NWTC was 4.21%. If we take our maximum amount, which is what's in the budget currently, it's, the city's portion is about a 1.5% increase. Let's go, stop, share. Let's see if I can share. Yeah, it's, overall, you're gonna see about a 5% increase. So if we take our max and there's roughly a 4% increase to the county's portion, then you're going to see, like, if you've got a $120,000 home, you'll see about a $120 increase on your property. If you've got a $300,000 home, you'll see a $300 increase. If you've got, like, one of our businesses in town that grows stories got about a $900,000 value, they're gonna see a $900 increase. So, our, our impact to that is not a huge amount. But if we don't go with the maximum, if we go with the bare minimum we need to break even, and that, that's based on a 0% increase to our portion of the levy. It takes about $20,000 off, and it's only gonna save a little bit for our taxpayers, but it would be something.
When you say a little bit, Amber, what are we talking about?
I should've had that figured out, and I did, and I apologize.
It looks like the big increase then is NWTC and the school district so far.
The school is by far the biggest.
John.
NWTC is 4.21%, but their portion of the bill is a small portion. Uh, yep, we're Odeports, okay.
Odeport.
I am going to unplug the camera for a minute. Because I need to bring up a new sheet. Or at least offload it here. And I apologize, I didn't have this figured out beforehand, I should have.
It's okay. See, the problem you have is when they get the tax bill, they look at the bottom line.
They do.
And, so, of course, that's when they come in to pay their taxes, that they say, "Look at here, my taxes went up, you know, X amount of dollars." The county, from what I listened to at their, their meeting, like, again, like last year, they're bragging they're gonna have a no increase budget. But the way it's set up, that doesn't work out with us.
The city's equalized value has grown faster than the surrounding jurisdictions. So even if the county keeps a zero increase, like they did last year, our residents are gonna pay a bigger portion because we have more value here. So we have to pay more of that full levy. And that's part of the reason for the increase to the school districts. Their, uh, the Algoma School District did have a levy dollar increase, but our portion also increased, so it made it even bigger. Okay, so... Roughly about half of that increase would, that can't be right. $63 change.
Wonder what Two Rivers is doing.
Oh, that's not without the increase to them. So, you're looking at about $20, $25 on a $120,000 home.
If we added...
If we go to the max or don't do the max.
Don't do the max. Okay. Okay. Is there more to your presentation, or did you give us all the bad news already?
That's the bad news.
Okay.
The good news is, any changes we make tonight during the public hearing do not have to be republished. Now, I'll talk with Jared after the fact to see if maybe we want to republish anyway. It's about 300 bucks to do rep publication. It might be worth it just to get the information out to the public. If we don't make any changes, then we don't have to republish at all. But, at the la, at the budget workshop, we had talked about the beach cleaner. Sorry, guys, I'm trying to do two things at once here, and I'm not very good at that. There we go. So, the beach cleaner that we discussed would be about $43,000. I reached out to Casey from the Fund for Lake Michigan, and he's very interested in seeing a proposal. They have never funded a grant for something like that before, but they have talked about it in the past. And if we had enough support from other jur, uh, committees and groups, it's a very good possibility they would fund at least a portion of it. So, I would like to add into the capital fund budget $43,000, or just shy of that, for the, for the beach cleaner. And on the revenue side, we would add $21,500 for a grant from Fund for Lake Michigan and/or other sources. And then we would, the city would pay $21,378 out of our loan dollars that we have. So that would come out of fund balance reserves. And then, go ahead.
If I might, we have a, we have a, we have, we, we just got out of a meeting that has a joker in the, uh, in the mix here regarding that, uh, business with Monsanto. And I think we need to anticipate, uh, those figures as well.
Oh.
Well, that wouldn't be part of the 2021 budget, though.
Well, it, it could be.
It sure, it sure could be.
You can take it out of...
We would do a budget amendment at that time. I, I wouldn't make that part of your base budget. That would, I think, be a budget amendment.
Okay.
And then, right before I left for vacation, Matt came to me. One of their pickup trucks is not doing so great. He was hoping to get it to down the road another couple of years, but it's looking like that's not gonna happen. So, we talked, and we think about $89,500 a year would be enough to cover a lease payment on a new pickup truck. So what we'll do is, we will purchase the truck, just like we did for Parks and Rec, out of the capital budget or capital fund. And then we'll transfer money back into that capital fund to basically lease the truck back until it's paid off. So we will increase the public works transfer out to the capital fund to just shy of $89,500. And we'll offset that increase to that line item by bringing the wages down a little bit, about $6,700. And that is due to the new hire. We had originally budgeted that new hire at the top of the range, and they came more at the mid of the range. So there's a savings there. And then, we just took $250 off of overtime because of that reduction, which then reduces FICA by about 530, reduces the retirement by just shy of 475. And then we also reduce the public works transfer out to equipment reserve and replacement by $1,000 to help cover the rest of the lease payment. So, the net balance is a zero exchange, it's just moving it from line item to line item within his department.
What, what pickup are we replacing?
Well, we're not replacing any of them. What I needed to do, though, is because of that Ford truck that we have, to have a placeholder in there in case we need to. So, that's, that's what it would be for, is to replace that Ford pickup truck.
So this isn't a definite?
It, it couldn't possibly not happen. The, the problem I have with the Ford, though, is you can see right through the back of it.
You mean the back window?
No. The box of it.
And how, how much do we use that truck?
Daily.
What's the frame like, Mac, uh, Matt?
That's the bothersome part about it. You know, right now, it's holding together. But if we do have a problem, I got a feeling that it's gonna be a big problem. Uh, it could be a, possibly a big expense.
What year is that?
Uh, that is a 2000.
Is there any type of liner or any reinforcement that can be done to drag it through another year or two?
There, yeah, I mean, there's always things that we can look at getting it through another year or two.
You could drop a new box on it if the frame is okay.
And that's, the problem is where it's, the box is mounted to the frame is where I think our issues are gonna come.
Ah, okay. Okay.
Okay. What else you got for us? I thought you said it was good news now.
Well, that is good news. We managed to find funding for it within his budget, there's no increase to it. I thought that was good news.
What about that transfer? Back because of the other situation we had, and we were gonna take some money out of his budget to offset another thing we're gonna do, so that money went back in his budget then?
We will be putting that back, yes.
Okay.
The, the additional amount that we had put in for the clerk position is not going to be needed now, so we will move the money back to the areas we took it, which was the, um, cable YouTube stipend. That'll go back, which was about $1,600. And then the remaining five grand would go back into the various line items that Matt had graciously reduced. And the line items he had reduced were snow plowing fuel by about 1,000, miscellaneous vehicle fuel was 1,000, seal coating cold mix was 1,000, street cleaning maintenance and operating supplies was 1,000, curb and gutter replacements 500, and street painting, road paint was 500. So we'll put those all back into his line items.
Okay. Continue, or?
Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody in the audience to, this evening for the budget public hearing have any questions? Kelly, you got anything? Okay. Go ahead, Amber, are you?
Okay, so then all I need from the council is, do you want to leave our levy at the max? Or do we wanna drop it back? Or, the other option we have is, we could wait till those, the, the county's portion comes in and we know what the actual amounts are. It is very possible we will need to hold a special meeting to pass the budget because your meeting in December is too late. So, if we can get the numbers from the county before your finance meeting, we can hold a special council meeting right after and be done. If we can't get it by that day, then we might have to do a meeting early the next week. And it would be a pretty quick meeting.
I think, I think the county's meeting on the 9th of November, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so we should have those numbers then before we finance.
Personnel, we would just do a special council meeting right after.
Okay.
Let, let me just go back to you people on the council. Questions, comments? Uh, you're the one that's, well, not really. Um, City Hall's the one that's gonna face the music, and myself. So, tell me what you wanna do. You wanna wait and leave it go like this until finance and see what we get from the county? And then make a determination at that time if we should go with the max or if we should cut back? And if you're looking to cut back, where do you wanna cut back?
We, the addition we put in for the extra tax, we just transferred out to capital improvements for additional capital. So if we cut back, that's where we'll cut back.
Mr. Mayor, I think the more information that you have, the better your decision can, can be, um, with, with respect to this. I would suggest that we do wait till we find out what the county has got, uh, in store for us.
Okay. Mitch?
With, with what you have now, Amber, what approximately, and, you know, figure, but, what will we have to cut to get back to a zero with what the other ones have increased? How much about would we have to cut to get back to a zero increase? And, knowing that the county's probably gonna be, county's not gonna come in at zero.
If, if you want the whole tax bill to get back to a zero?
Right.
Oh, I don't think we could do that.
Couldn't?
I don't think so. Not without cutting positions and services and that, that's a pretty big cut.
Yeah, we, we, there's no way we could do that.
I, I can work on getting that number for you, just in case, it's not as bad as I'm thinking.
It's not attainable, Mitch.
Don't waste your time.
We'd have to start cutting staff.
I mean, we can, we can very easily keep our tax levy to a zero, our, I shouldn't say that, our mil rate to a 0% increase. That's attainable, we put the budget together originally with that.
It, it doesn't pay because people don't look at, they don't divide them up.
No.
Whatever the whole thing is.
No, the only time they, that comes into play is when they come in the office and look at the pie chart we keep on the front counter that shows how much of that bill goes to each jurisdiction, but...
Don't take the time.
Yeah, okay.
Amber, I, I have a school board, um, school district, um, in front of me, and I'm looking at some of the total tax levy, and I'm wondering where you're getting your information from?
So you take the 2019 mil rate versus the 2020 mil rate, and that's what shows the percentage of increase, and that's how those tax bills are calculated. So that percentage on your tax bill that shows up is based on the mil rates.
So the mil rate they had for 19 and 20 was 8.84, and I have the 2021 at 8.69, which is a decrease.
That's based on equalized value. Your tax bill is calculated on your assessed value. And that's where the problem came in last year with the county. They were...
You're right, it, it's based on equalized value.
Yep. Yeah, so then, your tax bill's actually calculated on the assessed valuation. Because they, the state applies a formula to the value of the city as a whole to get equalized value, so everybody's on an even playing field. Because our assessments might have been done this year, but maybe Town of Lincoln's assessments were done 10 years ago. So, the state applies this formula to get everybody on an equal playing field, but they do it on the whole. They don't do it by each individual house. So then, when you split up that tax bill, you have to split it up by the assessed value, which is on each individual house.
And this past year, we've gone through a pretty significant reassessment of the properties here in Algoma.
A por, a portion of them, about 25% of them, yes.
A quarter.
Yep. Yeah, it's gonna take them four years to get through the whole city. Two? Two more?
Two more. Two total.
Oh, two to, okay, so Jamie's telling me about half of them been done. So, but we also had added property, which means we have to carry a bigger portion of that levy than we did last year. Last year, I wanna say we probably carried about 44% of it, this year we're carrying about 47%. Something like that, it's not a huge change, but it's enough to impact our residents' tax bills. I hope I'm explaining that okay. It's a pretty complicated process, and it's taken me about five or six years to wrap my head around it completely.
Any other questions or comments? Everybody okay with waiting till the finance meeting, when we get all, hopefully we'll have all the rates, and then we can make a decision at that time?
It's a better tough moment.
Okay. Anybody in the public have any comments? Hearing none? And then, I would like to move on. We're gonna go under consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance. I'll wait till Jared gets himself back in there. All set?
Yep.
Okay, uh, everybody have a chance to review the bills and the credit card payments? Any questions on any of them? Accept the motion to approve?
Slow.
Moved by Kevin. Second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, roll call vote. Yeah, good, good catch.
Yes.
Leverden?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Gore?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
All yeses.
Thanks, Jamie. Conference attendance, looks like Chief Remicker wants to go to the WPLF conference, February 7th to the 10th. What is the WPLF?
It's the annual conference for chief police throughout the state of Wisconsin. Um, went to it last year, we go, we send somebody every year.
Where is this one at?
Um, same place, um, the winter one's usually down in Dell's area. Last year I sent two people, this year I'm just going myself.
Just yourself? Okay. Scott, that came through your committee, right? Yeah, okay. Sure. All right. Um, any objection to that? I'll take, accept the motion to let Chief go to that.
Slow.
Moved by Scott. Seconded by?
Me.
Kevin? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. There are no other claims against the city at this time?
Uh, actually, we, we do have, um, a new one that's just come up. Uh, it involves the utility, and we have a claim regarding some water damage. Um, I can't really get into many details because it is going to litigation, but we do have another claim.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Then we will go to the minutes. And the first one on there is the finance and personnel, which was called to order on Tuesday, October 20th, at 4:30 PM by yours truly. The roll call was taken. And the council, uh, was, actually, I was absent. And it was, the meeting was run by Council President Lee Dashlet. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. The minute, meeting minutes were approved and seconded. Motion was made and seconded. Consideration of bills and conference attendance were gone over. And motion was made and seconded to approve those. There was no one in present for public comment under old business facility needs presentation from Performa. Um, Performa is the company that we're working with that is basically doing a needs assessment of our facilities, uh, here in the City of Algoma. Basically, they're looking at the Park and Rec building, the City Hall, fire station, and police station. And Public Works Building is not involved in that at this time. There was a presentation that was made. New business. There was a motion made, seconded, to recommend council approve a scope of engagement with Huntington Securities. That's the financial institution we work with. Sewer bond anticipation note renewal minutes. Committee briefly discussed that. There was general obligation bond refunding. Looks like they may approve to recommend council approve a municipal wide energy management policy. There was an update on the city clerk recruitment process. There was also, um, public works labor new hired. They approved hiring Andy Miller to fill the vacancy on the Public Works Department. There was discussion on B dock at the Algoma Marina, as everybody is familiar with, we replaced A Dock. And now we're looking at replacing B Dock. And, uh, that cost was estimated at 123,000. But there might be some grant money, it's my understanding, that we would be working with on that. Uh, that was the DNR recreational boating facilities grant that was gone over. Fee schedules was updated for the Marina, I think we're acting on that tonight. There were no agenda items for the next meeting. The next meeting date will be Tuesday, November 17th, at 4:30 at City Hall. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, then I'm going to move on to protection of persons and property. Scott?
Yes, Mayor. The protections of person and property meeting was held on Monday, October twenty-sixth, at four P M. at City Hall. The meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. Uh, the agenda, as well as the prior meeting minutes, were both approved. No one was there for public comment. Uh, in the department reports, uh, Fire Chief Ackerman presented for the Algoma Rescue. Their total calls to date for October is forty-five, and the year-to-date calls were three hundred and twenty-one. Um, news in the department, a disinfecting fogger has been purchased for the rescue department, um, with funds from the state grant. Um, for the fire reports, Chief Ackerman, um, responded, responded to eleven calls since last reported in September, fifty-two runs year-to-date. Eric Junior has put in his resignation from the department. And for the police, uh, Police Department, Chief Remicker provided the report. Calls for service in September were two hundred and sixty-three, which was significantly higher than twenty-nineteen. Um, total calls through the year are twelve forty. Um, court enforcement is ongoing, and a reminder to everyone that the winter parking enforcement and restrictions begin in November, and they run in April. So make sure to adhere to those. Um, moving on, request to attend seminars is something that we just went through for chief. The WPLF annual conference in February in the Dells. Uh, the bills were approved. Uh, old business, we had none. New business, we had none. We had a license application, which was approved for a Jason Joyce for fishtail L and a Mallory Rafson for fishtail L. Um, agenda meetings, uh, items for next meeting, there were none. And the next meeting will be held on November thirtieth at four o'clock, uh, at City Hall. The meeting adjourned at four eighteen. That's it.
Any questions or comments of Scott's report? Casey?
One question with the, the uptick or the significant uptick from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty in September calls. Uh, it, it was noted, uh, so was there, is there a, a, a trend they're seeing, or is it just an anomaly? Um, the fact that it was noted that it had been such an uptick?
So, sorry, sorry, Mayor. The, the uptick was mainly due to, uh, rescue calls with the COVID issues we're seeing going on right now. Um, there has been a spike in other calls. Nothing, nothing really as far as a crime rate or crime issue. A lot of it is just given the nature of the situation we're dealing with when you have COVID world, uh, we're seeing an uptick in, in just calls and service to the officers.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, typically, this time of year trends tend to go down. This is unusual. It tends to be going up. Election year, people stealing political signs and COVID.
Any other questions of Scott's report? Thanks, Scott. Let's move on to park and rec. Mitch?
Meeting was called to order October nineteenth at seven P M. Minutes, um, well, meeting was in compliance. Previous minutes, yeah, were approved and bills. No public comment. Supervisors report, um, we discussed the reopening of the community building and have, for small groups. Robertson will have further discussions with city administrator. It will be planning some sort of a Christmas activity that will be compliant with all the rules, uh, since we haven't done anything for, uh, for Halloween. Parks update, uh, we got an update on the lighting project at Perry Field. Everything is pretty good, except we're gonna have to adjust some of the lights for baseball. For football, they were very satisfied. Um, they also took care of the ruts that they caused, and I think they did a pretty good job. Um, see, three trees were scheduled to be taken down at Peterson Park by a company, but only two of them were able to be done. The other one was too dangerous for even a professional to look for alternate ways to do that. Friends of Crescent, or Crescent Beach, friends gave, uh, funds for new lamp, post bolts, covers. And, uh, labor to Matt's Handyman Services. Stormwater project is nearly complete. Landscapers will be there this week to plant grass and trees. Fee schedules, we, uh, updated the fee schedules. We did, uh, increase a few of them, which you'll see, you can read in post or see the post. Um, next meeting is Monday, November sixteenth, at seven P M. Adjourned at, uh, seven forty-five.
Questions or comments of Mitch's report? Hearing none. Thanks, Mitch. And let's move on to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission meeting was called to order on October twenty-second at seven P M. by yours truly. Uh, the roll was taken, and also the minutes from the prior meeting were approved from the February twenty-seventh meeting. Public hearing relating an application from rezoning by the Rasab Holdings LLC, which is better known as Ball Auto and Truck Parts here in Algoma. They purchased some property up in Industrial Park that was, the request was to rezone that, uh, from M Three Manufacturing to C One Commercial. There was nobody attending the public hearing that spoke against that, uh, request. Under old business, there was none. New business, then we took up the rezoning request after the public hearing, and that motion was made and, and seconded and carried. There was also a request from the Paul Doofek to combine, uh, parcel thirty-one, two oh one, G L four dash three, four two, and thirty-one, two oh one, G L four dash thirty-four, one point five. Uh, and a, and approval of the certified survey map. That, uh, there was some discussion on that, and a motion was made and carried. Discussion on the Algoma Industrial Park parcels and wetland delineation. Uh, Nick Iwin was here, and he spoke about some property that he is interested in looking at purchasing. But there needs to be a study on it, because it is wetlands, and we, council needs to decide if they wanna just. If he does his property, he would be responsible for the cost, but if we do the whole industrial park, then the city would be picking up the cost. Next meeting date to be determined. Uh, meeting was adjourned at seven thirty-one P M. Questions or comments?
I get a comment. I guess what the Doofek thing, if somebody's actually listening, they know about as much as I do what you're talking about by the number. Could we put the address of the two that are gonna be?
Well, yeah, it's, it's property that's located, um, north of Highway K. There is no address. It's vacant agriculture land. It adjoins the campground, Big Lake Campground. That's the property that when we looked at developing the Bell Harbor, we had approached the campground and also Mr. Doofek about running our water sewer through there. And of course, they came back and said, well, we'll let you do it, but we want X amount of dollars, so we decided not to do it that way. He owns two pieces of property. One piece of property is landlocked, so he needs to combine these. He has no intention of building anything at this time. Uh, so it is agriculture, so he could put up a garage if he wanted to, but that's basically the property. It's, I don't have an address on it, so.
Property right across from the church.
Okay.
Um.
Yep.
Kind of the same, I don't know, maybe this isn't the time, but who's, who determines prices on, uh, lots in the industrial park? And are they negotiable? Are they locked in stone? I have somebody that would love to build a very nice pole barn as a shop. He's looked in the industrial park. When he gets the prices for the parcels, he just, there's no way.
Do, do we have prices set on that new part of the industrial park?
We do not currently. What we have done is we talked to the city assessor on what he would have set the assessed value at on the land. He came up with an estimated twenty-five hundred dollars per acre. Um, but if we had anyone who was seriously interested in it, we would have to have a discussion, probably in closed session, to determine what we were actually going to sell it for. And we probably would have an appraiser come in and look at it and give us a true cost.
So if he's willing to make an offer, we'd listen.
If, if he's seriously considering it, he should come, certainly talk to Jared, the administrator, and that'll get the ball rolling.
I'll tell him.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then we will move on. Uh, we don't have a lot of committee reports tonight.
We still got Jake.
Oh, we got the library. Jake?
Oh, boy, here we go. Uh, called, uh, meeting was called to order on Monday, October nineteenth, at four P M. at City Hall. Uh, all members were present. A couple of us were, uh, on Zoom. We approved the agenda. Open meeting notices, uh, uh, and notice statement was read. Motions were made and approved to the agenda. Public input, there was none. Approval of minutes of the last meeting were made. Friends of the library report, uh, friends of the library report, as well as, uh, uh, office hour, a- a- as well as open hours for the library, uh, I suspect have changed. I'd like to, uh, redirect this committee report temporarily to Kathy to update us on, uh, library hours. Kathy, are you available to talk?
Kathy, are you on?
Okay, well, uh, I'll wing it, and if it's wrong, uh, uh, please forgive me. Uh, I would, I would suggest that you, uh, if you're making donations to the book corner, please call the book corner before you go. Just to, uh, make sure that you're, uh, uh, oh, there's Kathy, she's connecting.
Kathy? Are you, are you muted?
Uh, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, Jake, Jake wants the clarification on the new hours. He wasn't quite sure. Can you bring us up?
We, as of Monday, we're back to curbside. Monday through Friday, ten to five, Tuesday and Thursday, ten to six, and Wednesday, ten to seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, Kathy's director's report, uh, was updated on all libri- we've, uh, they've finished updating on all of the library programming. Um, and, uh, a virtual Halloween costume contest week was held on October twenty-sixth. Halloween adventure walk, the week of October twenty-sixth. Knitting grab-and-go for adults began, beginning on November eighteenth. Please call ahead. Uh, homemade Chia Pet grab-and-go kit, uh, beginning on November thirtieth. Please call ahead to reserve your kits. We had two or three new glass barriers installed, thanks to Packerland Glass. However, since they're not going to be open only for curbside pickup, please call ahead. Treasurer's report, petty cash, uh, and revenues, uh, were discussed and approved, approved the payment of bills. Old business, a library, uh, uh, plan, uh, discussions and changes. Kathy has updated us on, on, uh, the library open and close. New business, uh, library closed days were discussed. Closed session, there was none. Open session, uh, there was, we, no reason to. And the agenda for next, uh, meeting will be the review of the library plan and the digitization project. That's very exciting. Uh, we're gonna get out of the nineteen fifties and into the nineteen sixties on digitizing, uh, some of the archives that the library holds. Uh, some of the totals, uh, for the, for the month of, uh, October, they've purchased a hundred and sixteen books. They have five new, uh, uh, audiobooks and seven new DVDs. New and upcoming releases include The Marauder by Clive Cussler, Hidden in Plain Sight by Jeffrey Archer, A Time for Mercy by John Grissom, and The Ichabog by J K Rowling. That might be an exciting, uh, read for the kids as they're, uh, at home staring at their phones or their computers. Get them to read a book. New and upcoming DVD releases, Bill and Ted Face the Music. Uh, this is the third film in the Bill and Ted series, and this day, and this month in history, really only a couple. S S Fitzgerald sank on November tenth, nineteen seventy-five, has been mortalized by the Gordon Lightfoot song. The library does have some books, as well as one DVD on the Edmund Fitzgerald. Again, on the tenth of November, uh, uh, with a traditional ball and cake cutting ceremony, the United States Marine Corps celebrates their birthday. On this, on that day, November tenth, in seventeen seventy-five, the Continental Marines were established. We have U S Marines True Stories, Code Talker, a novel, a, a novel about Navajo Marines of World War Two, and many, many more. And I think that's everything, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions of Jake's report? Thanks, Jake. Did you have a question? No, okay. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate it. Let's move on to medical board. There's two sets of minutes there. John?
Correct. Uh, the first set of minutes is from October sixth. Uh, meeting was, special meeting was called to order at four thirty-nine. Uh, all members were present, the exception of Dawn Wagner. She was excused. Um, the, there were no approval of the minutes, so, um, we, we, the agenda was approved. Uh, the issue is COVID in facility operations, which is the reason the meeting was called. Topics of discussion were varied in nature, but all were related to operational challenges during this time of COVID care. Staffing needed, an estimated, uh, agency nurse, nurse need. An estimated one point five nurses are needed to cover the temporary shortings, uh, staffing shortages due to COVID. Uh, also payroll preparation and submission has become burdensome as a result of staffing and responsibility changes. Uh, it's a very fluid situation where you can have staff, even supervising staff, um, go into quarantine or, or unable to perform the duties that, uh, they were hired for. We also had to deal with, uh, special COVID funds, uh, and their allowed uses were reviewed. The continued operations, including payroll infringement, staffing incentives, uh, recognition of hardship and risk, testing for regular, regular staff and resident tests. Um, the training for infection control, isolation, use of, uh, protective equipment, uh, personal protective equipment. Also, equipment itself in terms of beds and lifts and technology and supportive education, uh, of the staff themselves. We also discussed our viability going forward. This relates to municipally-owned facilities, not qualified for federal aid programs, uh, for, for special programs. As you know, we are locked in on certain things because we are, uh, part of a municipal entity. Uh, we've seen a dramatic increase in our, um, workers' compensation, um, which, you know, is related to the city more than it is the, uh, medical center itself. Uh, also, we were talking about, uh, state and federal advocacy, talking points needed for letters of support. Also, billing skills, uh, for Medicare and Medicaid. We're exploring possibilities of either a joint venture, uh, with our county or contracted billing agencies. Uh, we experienced a twelve point five electrical rate increase, uh, that was communicated from Algoma Utilities. Mayor was going to verify that, uh, and in my next set of minutes, I'll, uh, there was some outcome. Also, parking lot funds, uh, were not cleared yet. Mayor was going to take that, uh, to Amber, uh, to check on the delay. Um, we adjourned at six oh eight. And we adjourned as a, um, board on October twenty-second at four thirty. Um, all members were present. Uh, in addition to the members present, we had Gene Marsh, Matt Murphy, and Carol Nell. Uh, the agenda and minutes were both approved. Uh, financial report was occupancy rate was at sixty-four point seven, uh, which was the lowest it's been this year. Uh, average daily census is twenty-six point two nine. Uh, patient revenues were two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven sixty-one. Operating revenues were two, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight fifteen. Uh, total operating expenses were two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three twenty. We had a net loss of forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five. And we had capital outlays of fifteen thousand, three ninety to Martin Security. Uh, Matt Murphy provided an explanation for the anticipated, uh, electrical bill increase and how that was determined. Um, the recap identified an error in the original calculation that, and it will not be a five thousand dollar per month increase. Um, approval of the bills took place. Um, under old business, the firearm system, which keeps, keeps, uh, keeps us going. Uh, in addition to the system, related horns and strobes needed to be updated. This was not considered in the original amount authorized. Uh, we had authorized up to thirty-four thousand, five hundred to accomplish the system upgrade. That is, that is, we are going ahead with that. In, in the twenty twenty-one budget, we will upgrade the strobes and horns as, as part of our capital. Final budget was presented to the board. Motion by Paddock to accept the twenty twenty-one budget is seconded by Rodrian. Six yes, zero no. Motion was carried. And the new business, we have COVID-related relief slash forecasting. Administrator Marsh provided a review of all COVID-related funding that had been provided in support of the medical center. Included for provider relief funds, COVID educational testing funds, and additional equipment funds. A plan was presented to maximize all of these funds, including the list of equipment to be purchased. Motion by Dart to authorize equipment purchases not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Second by Hep, roll call vote, six yes, zero no. Motion again was carried. Under the question of agency nurses, Administrator Marsh has provided additional information, provided additional information on the prospect of contracting for agency augmentation of the medical center staff. An additional registered nurse on per diem will cost us forty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty. The planned term and LPN would be thirty-three thousand, six hundred. Excuse me. If there is COVID in the facility, then an additional twenty-seven dollars per hour would be added on. Haven't had a talk this much. The November and December meetings, the board will not meet in November. Our last meeting for the year will be at four thirty. On December thirtieth, we assume. Understanding, standing business, the friends of the Algomia Medical Center, they had no meeting. Under the administrator's report, we had a census of twenty-six with Tuohon Hospital. Their, the way referral admissions are going is totally dependent on the staff that we have, so we may be declining admissions that are referred to us based on who we have in, in the staffing right now. Under revenue collection, we took it sixty thousand dollars. Until it's homeless sold. One of our dietary managers is out for the rest, for the month, free condition requiring surgery. We could use a few more CNAs. We are, we have still not received any applications for the director of nursing position. We had an infection, under regulatory, we had an infection control assessment and respond the art car survey this week. One area of concern is the need to fit test for N. ninety-five masks. We've ordered the fit testing kit. Everybody's going to be fit tested when that kit arrives. And we, let me see, we adjourned at six oh three. And again, I'll repeat the four thirty P. M. Wednesday, December thirtieth, twenty twenty, being our next in our last of the year meetings. Any questions?
None? Thanks, John. Let's move on to the last report. Utility, Lee?
President, please call meeting of the Algomia Utility Commission to order at five thirty P. M. And complies with open meeting law on October twenty-sixth, twenty-first. All members present, there was motion in second to adopt the agenda. Motion carried. There was a motion in seconded to approve the previous meeting minutes. Motion carried. Old business, none. New business, Johnson reviewed the Public Service Commission approved customer qualification and proper electric rate application procedure for non-residential customers. There was a motion in second to approve the payment of bills and payroll. Motion carried. There was a motion in seconding to approve the monthly financial reports. Motion carried. There is, capital operating and maintenance budget was reviewed and discussed. There was a motion made to approve the capital budget as presented, and motion carried. There was a motion in second to approve the operating budget presented. Motion carried. Managers report, Hawk discussed the new solar system installed at Algomia High School. And office manager report reviewed, Johnson encouraged customers to visit the utility website, algomiautilities.com and sign up for the new account online portal. Motion was made in second to adjourned at seven oh two P. M. Motion carried. Next meeting is November eighteenth at five thirty P. M.
Any questions or comments? Thanks, Lee. Let, at this point, then I would entertain a motion to approve the receipt of those committee reports that were presented this evening.
So moved?
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Let's move on to old business, ordinance eight twenty-nine. This is the second reading. Certain portions of sections four dash twenty-five dash four dash twenty-six, four dash twenty-seven, and four dash thirty-three, relating to alcohol license. Do you have any comments on that, Jamie?
No, this is just the ordinance that would allow the clerk to issue the operators licenses.
We reviewed it last month. Are there any questions on it? Does everybody understand it? Then I'll accept the motion to approve it.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Roll call vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Wheeze?
Yes.
Beverlyden?
Yes.
Tabbic?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Bore?
Yes.
All yes.
Thank you. Resolution ten forty-eight. This one here is that, I, I kind of looking for a brief overview of this without reading the whole thing. Jared, you want to just?
Yeah. Let me just switch the camera around here. Okay, so we received a request from a citizen to basically piggyback off of a resolution that was passed by the county board to support certain water, so-called water bills, which were taken up by the state earlier this year. Basically clean water bills and having to do with the, the cold tar sealing is, is one of the items. And this was requested that we pass this. This is not taking any specific action. This is just us requesting that the, the state assembly reconvene. I'm sorry, the state senate convene and pass these bills. They were passed by the assembly and then they basically, to simplify it, COVID happened. And the state senate was never able to convene and pass them themselves, even though it had unanimous bipartisan support. So all this is doing is a resolution following suit of the county, encouraging the state senate to convene and pass these bills.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Casey. Questions or comments on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. New business, approval of new operators license applications for Jason Joyce for Fishtails and Mallory Rafson for Fishtails. This will be the last time we have to do this, correct? So from this point on, those will be approved by the clerk, whoever that might be. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Kevin. Sarah, second.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions on those two applicants? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. City clerk recruitment process. I guess I'm going to turn that over to you because I wasn't at that meeting, so.
So at the October twentieth Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, we talked about what we were going to have the process look like for the city clerk recruitment. Part of that discussion was what the interview panel would look like, being myself, the treasurer, the mayor, and the outgoing city clerk. There was also some question as to what role, if any, the committee slash city council would play in that recruitment process. So as a follow-up to that, I've outlined kind of the two distinct possibilities here. Option one was the process that I outlined at the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, which is basically you have the interview panel that I just outlined. We conduct the interviews and make an offer to the best candidate, which would then go to the Finance and Personnel Committee for approval. The alternative, if the committee slash council wishes to be involved in that process, this would basically be a second round of interviews, similar to how we would do it for a department head or the administrator position. My recommendation, however, is to stick with option one because the clerk is not a managerial position. This is someone who directly reports to the administrator. And, you know, in my role, I have, you know, I'm the one who works with them on a day-to-day basis. I'm the one who's responsible for that position. And ultimately, it, it's just, it would be very uncommon practice for the council to be involved in that recruitment process. So that's, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Comments?
I had a suggestion. What about in keeping with option one, but in kind of do a combination between the two? Where option two sounds as though it would be like the full council. What if the president of the council were involved in the interviews as well? You know, adding that individual then to option one as another, as another panelist, basically, for the interviews?
Sorry, changing cameras again. So a, as you might recall, this, this idea came up during the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. My opinion, my, my feeling on that is it doesn't, it doesn't make much sense to involve only one member and not the entire council because the, the question was raised, you know, why, why is the, why is the committee just more or less rubber stamping these recruitments? And so in, in listening to that and reflecting on that, it doesn't make a lot of sense for only one member of the council to, to be involved, in my, in my humble opinion. But I, I think if, if the wish is to involve someone from the council, I think that that's a logical choice. But again, I, I would just contend, you know, my feeling is that it's either everyone or, or nothing is, is the best route to go.
My thought is that there at least would be representation of the council. You know, not that the entire council is involved, you know, in this, in this entire process, but at least there would be some representation there on behalf of the rest of us. And if there are certain questions or concerns that we have, maybe the president is able to address those at the time and assist in the decision-making.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that that makes, that makes sense. I would ask that the council then provide the council president with questions ahead of time that you specifically want the candidates to be asked. So that we know what it is exactly that the council is looking to learn from these candidates.
Jared, how much discussion would you expect at a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting if we're deciding as to whether or not to hire this individual or not?
Well, I think frankly, we're, you know, that means we're looking bigger picture. To be perfectly frank, this, this is a, a process that I am not used to, not used to seeing, particularly for a position such as the clerk. I have seen processes like this for administrators and department heads, but not for staff who are not supervisors or department heads themselves. Frankly, I, I don't know how much conversation would occur if the council were not involved because putting myself in your shoes, what's there to really talk about? So I'm sympathetic towards that concern and why I, I, I see to the extent that the council wants us say in who is hired, why we would go this route. I, I do understand that.
Now, it's, it's the clerk that does the training of all of the poll workers. We have an election at least once a year, sometimes more often than that. So I, I don't want to say that, that it's the same as a, as one of the other managers, but there's certainly a training and management aspect to that position. So I, I, I'm interested in, you know, some of those skills, soft skills that, if we want to call them that, with respect to working with volunteers. Well, they're not volunteers if they get paid, so.
So, so are you saying that because of that, we should treat the clerk position as a managerial position? Just so I'm being clear?
Well, you know, I, I think you should be looking at the skills of the individual and not necessarily categorize it as, as managerial, but management of people is an important skill that the individual has to have. You know, not everybody can train. There's also a, a relationship that has to be built with the, with the county for the role of the elections. So not to mention the day-to-day, whoever comes in through the door. Big smile or breathing fire. Take your pick.
So are you afraid those questions would not be asked? I, I don't quite understand where you're coming from, John.
Well, you know, I, I really don't know what's going to be asked. I would hope that those things would be asked.
Well, I, I would think they would. I, I guess the question is whether or not you want the council involved in, in the meetings. I don't know how many candidates we're going to get. We could have five, we could have ten, we could have fifteen. They're going to need to be narrowed down. I think that was one of the reasons that Jared had requested that the clerk sit in on the meeting along with the treasurer, who is going to be dealing with these people on a daily basis to kind of get a feel for these individuals. I guess the question that he's posing is option one or option two. Who better to be able to answer any question this individual might have than the current clerk? I'm not in a position, and at this point Jared's probably not either, and maybe Amber is because she works on a daily basis with the clerk. But that was one of the reasons that it was very important, I think, to have the current clerk sit in on there only to answer questions, not to basically come back and recommend who that individual would be. If you look at the job description for the administrator, it's his position. We, we outlined it in there, that he is basically to hire any staff that's underneath, that's not considered management staff. So I, I don't know what you people want. I guess Jackie's saying you want to include the council president. So now you're including the council president, but you're saying in order to answer any questions you might have. What questions are you going to have? Are you going to give those prior to the council president? So he's asking those during the interview? I mean, I, I guess, I, I don't know where you're coming from on this, people.
I guess it was my idea to involve, involve the council because the way we have it now, you're the only person that, that answers to the electorate. When you pick a supervisor or, not a supervisor, but this type of a position, that's on the committee doing the interviewing. And people will say, well, why did this person get the job? And what qualifications? And we get the sheets, but we can't really say much. But it's like, I just think having somebody from the council that's elected other than you and has some culpability, I just think it's a good idea. I, I said, when you weren't here at the meeting, and I, this is, I'm going on my sixth year, finishing my sixth year. We have never done a hire here that I had a choice. It's, it's either here's our candidate and that was it. I mean, there were times we were invited to I mean, there were times we were invited to interviews. Sometimes on Saturdays, I couldn't make it, but it's like. We hire people and we make decisions based on a committee's recommendation. And we don't know a thing about anybody else that was there. We're relying totally on the committee to recommend somebody and we don't have any other choices.
But don't you think that's why we have committees? I mean, if you're gonna wa- if the council wants to be involved in every hiring. And I think the council was involved in the hiring of the police chief, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we did have some outside chiefs come to do the questioning, which because we were looking for experts. But if the council's gonna wanna start being involved in all the hiring, you recently just hired a person for public works and you were not involved in it. Do you feel Mitch that you wanna be involved in everything?
I'm not saying everybody has.
But who did we pick and choose to be the one to be involved from the council? That's gonna have, be able to answer the questions that you're as a council member are gonna wanna know. I, I'm, I'm game for anything.
If we did it on a rotating basis, or, or who have people say, I'm interested, if you get three. You pick one, um, I don't agree totally with, with, uh, that it has to be the whole council or none. I don't, I don't understand that. When the police chief, you had Lee, I think, was on the committee, because he was the chairman of the committee. There is no.
No, it's Scott.
Or Scott. There is no committee in this case. I'm guessing that when the last street department worker was on, were you on that?
Yes.
You know, if it's associated with the committee. That person that's the chairman, if we hire somebody for the park, I'd be glad to be on.
Well, you do.
You know, hopefully we don't have to hire anybody.
No, but for management, what I mean for park employees, your, your committee recommends.
And then I would say if it's a position in city hall where there is no committee. Then it should go to the council president, if he doesn't want to, he can appoint somebody that he would like to, if they're willing. You know, I just think that. We're elected to do some of this stuff and. You know, we, we, yeah, we were like a rubber stamp for everybody, basically we've hired, because I've only known one person. When Matt got hired, when the chief got hired. You know, we brought, one person was brought to us.
Right.
We have no idea who else applied.
Kelly, did you have a, wait, Kelly, did you have a comment?
I just have a comment, um, the last public work employee that was just hired, the committee had virtually no knowledge of it. I've been on the public works committee for over twenty years, it's the first person. Including employees or manage, the management. That I didn't even know who the candidates were, I wasn't involved in, nobody, other than Lee, I think. No one was involved from the committee in the process of interviewing, so I'm gonna just. Beg to differ what you just said, that the committees are doing the recommending. It didn't happen just a few weeks ago.
I didn't mean the committee like your park or your, uh, street department committee, I meant the committee of the people. You know, the, the mayor, Jared, you know, the, not the street department committee, it's, it's the committee that was chosen. And I think. Maybe one, I, I know when, when we did the chief, uh, what's his name, who's on the P P P, John.
Orley?
Wasn't he on there?
Well, he sat in, I mean, anybody, the all, council sat in. If you were unable to make it, I don't know, it was a Saturday, I think it was.
Yeah, it was a Saturday, I couldn't, but, um.
So, okay, and that's fine, um, so what do you want to do on this particular case? Let's, let's not beat this to death. You want the whole council? Do you want the council president? Anybody else have any comments at home?
Sorry, Mike.
Casey?
So, I, I, I think that we, we, we hire a position like Jared and we empower him with the duties that, that are required. That includes, to his point, uh, deciding downstream candidates. And I mean arguably, you, you could say of, of any, any situation in the city. That we technically should be involved with because we represent or we are elected representation of the people. But that's why we, we empower employees and we empower, uh, managers to carry out those things, because it would be infeasible. To be in everything, um. Yeah, I, I guess if, if we have input, I, I suppose that's something that I, I would imagine Jared would be welcome to, uh, receive. But I don't know if it's, it's, it's necessary to have somebody on there, and, and it seems redundant for one, and it, it seems like it, it might make the process more convoluted. Uh, than it needs to be.
Okay.
My, my, my experience, uh, if I might. Is that, uh, I would, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Jared's, uh, take and with Casey's statement. That, uh, we have hired Jared to ask the correct questions. We have hired Jared to know how to handle the legal minefield. That is constituted around, uh, uh, human resources hire. And what questions we can ask and can't ask, uh, that, uh, could, uh, could potentially be. Uh, significant, uh, uh, legal liability to the city. And if the s- council as a whole would like to submit questions. That they feel need to be asked through Jared as our human resource manager and administrator. I'm all for that, but I really don't think that we need to clutter up the discussion by just adding bodies. Uh, to a process that should be rather compact and relatively streamlined.
And I never wanted it to be where every councilman was involved, but I just think that in a hiring process. There should be one. And I've never meant that for be all eight of us. I mean, I really think we should change the name of the finance and personnel to just finance committee. Because we really have nothing to do with personnel in that, in that meeting. Unless something happens, I mean, but. But I never wanted all eight of us to be, you'd get, you'd be here all night like we are tonight, so. But so I, I'm okay if it goes, if it stays, and it's the committee you recommend.
I agree with option one. Uh, I, I believe I still have the ability to, to submit questions to Jared, um. That I would like to have addressed.
Anybody else have any comments? Scott?
Oh, I'll reiterate what I said at our finance personnel meeting that, um. You know, it kind of coincides with what Casey and Jake had said, uh, we. We hired our, I, I have full faith in the staff, the staff level, we hired Jared to do this job. Um, at the end of the day, it's, um, uh, that is, that is one of his duties, um, if, if and when. Um, he or any other member of the, the, the committee or the council would reach out to me for advice or counsel. Um, during the process, I'd be more than happy to give it, but I'm not here to micromanage. I would hope that, uh, um, that is known and, and if, if it is needed, that, uh, the help would be accepted. Um, I don't, a- at the end of the day, like I said, uh, you know, last week or two weeks ago when we had our meeting, um. It, the, the decision is going to be ours as a body, um, they're going to bring us the best, best candidate, they're gonna do all the vetting. And if and when we, we sit down and, uh, we meet this person or we are presented with the option, uh, if, if we don't fully. Think that, um, you know, if we aren't in full agreement or don't have full confidence in the decision that they made. Uh, we, we do have the right to say yea or nay, so I'm, I'm in favor of option one. I, I, I trust you, I trust the, uh, staff level to, to do their job.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments? Or okay with option one? Anybody gonna object to option one? Okay. Yes, Jared?
I just wanted to, um, in, in, in light of, uh, Alderman Pabix's comment, I. I'm more than happy to receive questions, if there are specific questions that any member of the council wants answered during the interview. Uh, I'd be more than happy to take those, I just ask that you get them to me by the end of next week. Uh, so that we can, because I have to go through and then vet all the questions and make sure that, you know, that they're all, all, uh, legal and they all flow. Well, and, and as part of the process, so. Um, if there are specific things the council is looking for that wants answered, I'm more than happy to incorporate that into the interview.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance eight thirty, amending zoning ordinance seven eighty-three, parcel number thirty-one two oh one. Fifteen oh eight Sunset Avenue, that's the first reading. Jared, you wanna expound on that?
Uh, yeah, so just give me a second here. Uh, yeah, so this is, uh, from the, oh, sorry, let me change the camera again. So this is the, uh, rezoning request that was mentioned, uh, during the, the plan commission meeting minutes. Uh, the property down in the industrial park is currently zoned M three. Uh, this is for the, um, the auto parts store, they are, in order to operate their business are. Uh, they need to have a rezone to C one, and there was unanimous, uh, um, approval to recommend, or I'm sorry. Unanimous to recommend approval and, and staff agrees, uh, that it is a consistent, uh. It is a logical rezoning, it is consistent with our comprehensive plan, um. And so with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. This is the first reading, so you'll all have a chance to go through it, uh, any questions at this time, I'm sure you all read it. Hearing none, then we're gonna move on, we'll, we'll address it at the next meeting. This is ordinance eight thirty-one, amending article three of the City of Algoma Code. Ordinances relating to use of snowmobiles and all terrain vehicles in the City of Algoma. This is also the first reading. This has come before the protection of property and persons, there was a request by some individuals, correct, chief? That we look at, uh, creating ATV trails.
That is correct.
Access trails in the City of Algoma. Did anybody have any questions of this at this time? No? It's again, it's the first reading, so we'll take action at next month. Then we'll move on to the next one. That's, um, resolution ten forty-one, that's authorizing the scope of engagement letter with Huntington Securities. That's Jeff Bollangi, correct? And he's just, the name changed. And so we're, all we're doing is just approving.
Every time we start working on a debt issuance, we'll do another scope of engagement letter, that's just some of the rules they have to adhere to under the federal guidelines.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
Almost, second.
Lee moved, Lee moved, who seconded it?
I, yeah.
Kevin seconded it? Okay, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Resolution ten forty-two, authorizing issuance of nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents sewer bond anticipation note. With the Bank of Luxembourg, Amber?
So, the city currently has a bond anticipation note sitting at the Bank of Luxembourg for the sewer department. That note comes due. Mid-November, I want to say it's like the ninth or the twenty-first, somewhere in there. Um, we either have to pay the note off in full, which is a little over a million dollars. Or we can refinance it into another bond anticipation note for an additional four years, because that's the maximum we can go up to. And the way I've set it up with the Bank of Luxembourg is we can pay this note off at any time. Once the sewer fund has met the reserve requirements, they have to have enough net income for the year. To pay the debt payments at a hundred and twenty-five percent. And then we can go to bond market. If you don't have that requirement met, you can't go to the bond market with these notes, so that's why we're doing these bond anticipation notes. We're at roughly a hundred and twenty percent for twenty twenty.
Okay. So that, it basically, resolution ten forty-two, ten forty-three and ten forty-four are basically all the same? For the same reason?
No.
Okay.
Forty-three and forty-four are two, is a different issue.
Okay, so right now on ten forty, uh, forty-two, any questions of Amber, otherwise I'll accept the motion? Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we'll go on to resolution ten forty-three, authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and thirty thousand, go refunding note with the Bank of Luxembourg, Amber?
So this is currently a debt issuance that the city has. That was originally set out in. Oh goodness, I want to say two thousand and nine. It is at the bond market, so we actually went out to the bond market and sold these bonds. The interest rates for the upcoming next nine years that are left on the bonds. Range from four point four percent all the way up to four point seven five percent. The Bank of Luxembourg, the bond is now callable, which means we can refinance it, or in municipal terms, it's called refunding. The Bank of Luxembourg is willing to give us a loan for eight years, so a year shorter, at two point five percent interest. Which by doing that will save us approximately seventy-nine thousand dollars in interest payments that we would pay if we left it at the bond market. So it really does make sense to go through the bank and issue a bank note for the remaining eight year, for eight years, one year shorter. Pay it off a little bit sooner and a lot less interest.
Motion?
Go.
Moved by Lee. Seconded by John. Questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Resolution ten forty-four, authorizing the call of eleven twenty-three, two thousand and nine, one million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, go refunding bond. Amber?
That's the original issuance of this bond in the bond market. It was issued in two thousand and nine, the original amount was issued at one point, almost six million dollars. What's left is the nine hundred and thirty thousand. So now that you've authorized us to go ahead and get a note from the bank to pay it off, we have to call that. Bond from the bond market, and so that's what this is doing, is authorizing Corals and Brady to issue that call notice. So we can pay off the bond market and then issue the note.
Motion?
Come on.
Moved by Mitch. Seconded by Kevin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Resolution ten forty-five, that's amending the City of Algoma fee schedule for fees at the Algoma Marina. You should all had a copy of this, I'm taking it that the proposed fees are the ones in red. That you're changing or you're proposing to change?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That's the season pass, resident season pass is going up five dollars, uh, non-resident season pass is going up five dollars. Uh, water, electricity outs included for seasonal is going up five dollars. The trans, transient daily fee is going up to two dollars from a dollar sixty-five. And transient monthly is going up from eighteen to twenty dollars. Question, uh, motion?
Move.
Moved by John. Jake, excuse me, moved by Jake.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Resolution ten forty-six, implementing a municipal wide energy management policy. It's my understanding that this is something we've done every year.
Man?
No, we started this when we started doing the LED change out.
Okay.
So, Amber, about probably eight months ago, ten months ago. Was it the last one, I believe, we did? Or it was longer than that, because it's expired in twelve months, so a year ago.
Okay. Motion? Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Jackie. Any questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Last one, resolution ten forty-seven, authorizing the purchase of materials for construction of a new B dock for the Algoma Marina. Matt and Amber? Whoever?
This, this would be to replace the, the, uh, current B dock. Um, very similar to how we did A Dock, uh, B Dock will come out of the water. We will order the pieces, our guys, my guys at the shop will build out B Dock throughout the winter and, um. Put, have this ready to put into place, um, in spring. With the caveat of this total price of one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars is still doing some. of one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars is still doing some legwork on finding out some grant funding that we're still trying to put some answers together on some transient issues and how we can maximize the funding of a possible grant to use towards this.
If we don't get the grant, the replacement? Uh, B Dock is still going forward?
That would be correct at a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. It's not dependent on the grant?
It's correct.
Okay.
So, Matt, this is, this is John. So you can get a pretty good feel for before and after by looking at the, what we've got in the harbor right now, right? Where you've got the A Dock pushed up against one side and B Dock is still there. And it's gonna make a big difference in how the har- harbor looks, that's for sure.
Yeah, so it, it, what John is, is referring to is A Dock was pushed all the way to the north end of the marina. Now, if you're down there about two-thirds to three-quarters of A Dock has now been removed out of the water. We will finish that removal tomorrow and then start the removal of B Dock, uh, to come out of the water to get ready for both of them to go back in in spring.
It was a comparison between the two. It was what I was referring to.
That is correct. I apologize. Yes, John. So, A Dock was all brand new for the twenty-twenty season. We would put in B Dock to be brand new to start the tw- A and B then would be one year old and brand new to start the twenty-one marina season.
Is that new pedestals doing it?
The pedestals on B Dock are, are already completed. They all have, um, uh, DUCs are, all, all have been replaced on B Dock. So we would have new wiring being ran, but the pedestals are all ground fault protected already.
Okay. Okay, motion?
Move.
I'll make that question.
Moved by Lee. Seconded by, was it John?
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Well, that's it for new business. Then we're gonna move on to the administrators' report. Jared?
Yep, thank you. I'm just moving the camera again.
You gotta hire somebody.
Um, so, uh, as outlined here, clerk position, we have posted the position following our finance personnel committee meeting last month. Uh, we are accepting applications through Wednesday, the eighteenth. Uh, facility needs study update. We had the presentation as well at that finance and personnel committee, um, meeting, uh, kind of giving us an update on where that was at and the conceptual, um, uh, outlook there for our, our facility needs. Um, you know, we weren't looking for direction at the time. We, we still are not. Um, given the, let's just call it what it is, the considerably high price tag associated with those projects, um, I've asked to meet with our financial advisor to go over and see if there's any, uh, any feasible way to even make it happen, if it's worth even considering moving on to the next steps or if it's so far beyond what we can do that we need to basically just, uh, shelve it for now. So I will be providing an update, uh, to the council or the finance personnel committee meeting following that meeting with, uh, our financial advisor. Uh, COVID nineteen, um, as we all know, it has not been exactly a banner month the past few weeks with, uh, northeast Wisconsin with COVID. Uh, it seems like every day we're setting some kind of new record. Uh, so with that in mind, uh, effective today with the exception of tomorrow because it's election day, uh, City Hall is once again gonna be closed to the public, uh, only open by appointment. Uh, and when I say appointment, it's nice if you can call ahead and set up a time, but really what we just mean is call us and we will come and get you, uh, if you come to City Hall. Uh, that allows us to interact with one member of the public at a time and allows to properly sanitize any common surfaces just out of an abundance of caution, uh, for both the public and the staff. Um, unlike when we did this earlier in spring, we went back, you know, back in April, we were limiting it to just early voting and dog licensing here. There, there's really no point to limiting what type of business, so everyone will still be able to do all the same things, just one family at a time. Um, the roster recovery grant allocation, we've expended all but about thirteen hundred dollars of that and there's still a little bit that we're putting in. Uh, for that, we have until the end of this week to spend those monies. Um, so far, we've used that to purchase, uh, PPE for staff and the public, uh, to use in our offices and, and facilities, uh, cleaning and sanitization materials. Um, and I, I can turn over to Tom. He can explain this a little bit better, but, uh, one of the, the bigger things we purchased for the fire department were these, um, I don't know, Tom, what, what did you call them? They're like foggers almost, right? Or, or what exactly are they?
Yeah, they're units that we use to sanitize our apparatus and actually the station as, as well. Um, and they're foggy units. It puts a light mist on the surfaces and, uh, it's a matter of letting it, that mist sit on the surface for a couple of minutes and sanitize. So, there's a lot of other agencies out and about in the northeast Wisconsin area that are using them and, uh, having good success with them.
Thank you. Uh, we've also purchased, uh, new tough books for the, uh, the, for the police department, uh, because, you know, we, we need to make sure that everyone has access to their own laptop and it's not a shared surface in order to avoid, uh, contamination there. Um, we've also purchased laptops for, uh, certain city staff or ju- for, for use in the need that someone needs to work remotely, um, or to help facilitate, uh, Zoom, use of Zoom for meetings. Uh, and then we've also, as several of you who have come through here have noticed, uh, we've renovated the old police department office space here on the first floor of City Hall, uh, with the idea being we're gonna be moving, uh, the clerk in the treasurer position down to that end of the hallway to physically separate them, uh, to provide, uh, more, a safer, uh, environment. Um, you know, I, because obviously, right now, there's a shared workspace. They're about ten, fifteen feet apart, but at the end of the day, they're still sharing a workspace. So, um, we're able to use these monies to renovate the old PD workspace and, and better distance them, uh, with that. So, um, and then the last item on here is the stormwater outfall project. Uh, it's just about complete and we're actually gonna be ahead of schedule on that. Um, I'll turn over to Matt to provide a few kind of last-minute details.
Yeah, so the stormwater outfall project is probably ninety-five percent complete. Um, there's a couple punch list items. Uh, me and the engineer, uh, Ryan Trzynski from Robert E. Lee, our engineer, did a walkthrough on Friday. Um, there's a few odds and ends that need to be touched up. Um, the parking lot stripes have to go in. It sounds like they will be out here Monday to perform that task. Um, it could be possibly later this week, but at the latest, Monday. Um, and then push to get our final bills, um, from everybody so we can get our submittals, um, to Amber so Amber can get those over for grant purposes. By the November thirtieth, I think, is correct, Amber, we need a hundred percent of our submittals, um, taken care of for that. Um, but it should be, for the most part, wrapped up.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the administrators' report?
I have a question for tomorrow. Do we have any plans for poll watchers or accommodating them?
I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end with turning it over to Jamie for talk about the election and everything. So, uh, I got, she's got a whole about an hour and a half report that she would like to give this evening since it's her last day. So, I'll, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to her and everybody knows that Jamie Jackson is gonna be leaving the City of Algoma. She has taken another position further south. Um, Jamie will be missed. I can tell you that I've talked to a lot of people in the community that tell me we're losing a good person. I don't think there's anybody in this room or anybody that's watching this televised, uh, council meeting that's gonna disagree with us. I want to thank her personally for everything she's done, uh, not only for the city, but what she's done for me. She's made my job a lot easier. I think we had a good team with her, Amber, and Jared. I hate to see the team being broken up and I hope we have as much success finding somebody to replace her. But I told her this evening, I would end with letting her talk about the election. So she has a lot of notes, but the floor is yours.
Okay, so to address John's question, um, we do always have a space set up for observers. I have never experienced one coming in and watching, um, but if we do have one, I think tomorrow's gonna be the day. We have been notified by the Kewanee County Star News to probably expect somebody. They've notified all three, uh, cities and the village of Luxembourg, um, in the county that they plan on stopping at too. So I'm guessing that we're gonna get hit with one of those either at the beginning or the end of the day. Um, I don't anticipate any issues there as w- either, but, um, we'll be ready for them if they show up. Otherwise, uh, my report that I have prepared, um, was that we have eighteen hundred and forty registered voters in the City of Algoma. We have issued one thousand eighty-four ballots already to in-person absentees and mail-out ballots. There's fifty-one of those still outstanding. So fifty-six percent of our registered voters have already cast their ballot. Um, any of those outstanding ballots can still be returned until eight o'clock tomorrow night. For anybody that is still coming to vote in person tomorrow, I am expecting that this is not gonna look like a normal presidential election. We're not gonna be as busy as we would have expected had this been a normal year. Um, we're asking that voters wear a mask if they don't want to. We can't tell them that they can't vote, but we're still encouraging it. Um, they will be required to, um, sanitize their hands when they come into the polling place. We have clean pens available at the hand sanitizing station. They are to pick up one of those pens, carry it through the polling place. They're gonna use that pen to, um, sign the poll book, use it on their ballot, and then take it home with them. We don't wanna be having a bucket of pens to clean at the end of the day, so just take them home. Um, all of our poll workers will be wearing masks similar to the August election. There's also gonna be plexiglass, plexiglass barriers between poll workers and the voters. Our poll workers will also kind of be around the edges of the room versus having a ballot table in the middle of the room. Um, also, we've had a lot of questions from people that didn't get into early vote that maybe now are sick. Um, if you have symptoms or you have COVID, you can still vote. Um, please don't come into the building, but there are phone numbers posted on the front and back entrances of City Hall. If you call one of those numbers, somebody will come out and help you vote from your car. We'll send out two poll workers. It's gonna take a little bit of time to get things gathered, but you can vote from your car and then the poll workers will come in and feed your ballot through the tabulator. That's kind of the gist of it, unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions of Jamie and in the election tomorrow? Sounds good. Thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope.
You're all set?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, uh, I have no appointments, so yes. Thank you very much. I have no, uh, appointments or other comments, but I would entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C. Concerning employment, promotion, compensation, or performance, valuation data of any employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, review of personnel and managerial, managerial position.
I'll move.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Seconded by Lee. Roll call, vote.
Russell?
Yes.
Wheeze?
Yeah.
Maverden?
Yes.
Pabix?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Maring?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Whore?
Yes.
All yeses.
Okay. Lee, come and shut the doors.
I, no, I'm not running down there.